Okay, it's seven o'clock, time to call this meeting to order. Please stand for the flag to leave.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Sherman, if you'd like to lead us in a name and prayer, please.
Dear time to be Jesus. We come together tonight to make decisions on behalf of the city, trying to guide us to make proper decisions and keep everybody safe during this COVID emergency. Benin.
Smith? Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Mr. Dunphy?
Here.
Mr. Grant?
Here.
Mr. Booth?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
President, we need to flesh the agenda this evening.
First, let's do a motion to.
Need to do a motion to make Susan Harmony our temporary clerk.
And accept the resignation of Andrea.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Your team.
Would you like to excuse Greg from tonight's meeting?
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
All right, so everyone had a chance to, we need to add, I'm sorry, we gotta, we need to add ordinance sixty-nine twenty to the agenda. Second time. We're making a motion to.
Sorry, I was reading it, yes.
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yeah.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Don't worry, I'll get that.
That's all right.
Maybe.
Okay. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the August tenth, twenty twenty meeting?
Motion two forty.
Second.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yeah.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Any sense of comments? Okay. Business and organizational comments?
Can you speak up out there, please? Note that thing, just, I hear it's just a rough mumble, it's the only comment I got, so it's only from the front.
All right, business and organizational comments?
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Committee discussions?
Yeah, we did have a police and fire meeting where we discussed some code ordinances. One was happening to be adopting the International Property Maintenance Code, so that's book is very old, so everybody can take a look at it. And we also discussed, oh, some departmental things for the police department. There was a discussion of the truck.
Yes.
We had a Parks and Rec committee meeting. We discussed the new cameras and the motion activated lights. We also discussed replacing the gate, moving the gate to a better location. The city manager discussed about putting that gate in play, especially during baseball games where that would only be allowed, senior citizens and/or handicapped would be allowed to drive down through there. Trying to make that more kid-safe, kid-friendly, if you would be.
Could you clear answer? Polyfield.
Yes, that's Polyfield, I'm sorry. So, but things are really coming along down there, they should have the internet there soon, and. And we had a street committee meeting where we talked about the repairs, rebuild, basically, on Chestnut Street. I'm sorry, so, I apologize. And the work on Chestnut Street, as well as the bricks that we're going to work on saving, which there's ordinance in for tonight, as well as, for anybody that's having issues or sees issues with the streets. That's quite loud. If they go on the Nelsonville website, there is a link where they can text pictures, information, and it gets to the city folks so they can get those, get that worked out.
Two gang socks.
Anyone else?
Is there another meeting?
No other meeting, no.
Okay. Okay, Mr. President, I've talked to a citizen this evening that is talking about putting a business into the community.
Yes.
And was asking about potential activation from the city, and was wondering if we could have a planning and development committee meeting to discuss that.
That's.
Yeah, I was getting ready, that was what I was getting.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, that's okay, so I'd like to have a planning and development committee meeting on Tuesday, September eighth.
Okay.
At six, if that works for people, is it six, okay, seven? Okay, seven.
September eighth at seven.
September eighth at seven.
Okay. Sounds good. You got anything, Karen?
I just have a comment, and I need Mr. Hunter to help me with it. We just seem to have so many things all the time on emergency, and I know that when we do that, there's something that affects, like you can't, is it a referendum? Could you explain that, please?
Sure. You have the emergency clause, it goes into effect immediately and deletes the write-up referendum on any.
And what's a referendum?
Right.
What was the referendum?
The referendum will be, has to be obtained, the citizens have thirty days, if there's no emergency, to go out and collect signatures. I think the charter requires fifteen percent of those, but it was the last gubernatorial election. They obtain that, then the ordinance is held up until the next general election, so if you were having a referendum filed, for instance, right now in August, you would wait a year and a half before it would be heard.
So, anything we do under emergency can't be protested or went back against, is that?
That is correct, they can't file a referendum on it.
So, I'd really like to get away from things that don't have to be, like, signed by next week, try to get away from some of the emergencies, because we seem to have every single thing in our emergency.
Yeah, it's more than just sign next week, because if you don't put an emergency on, it has to wait thirty days to be adopted, so it's really a thirty-day plan. Yeah, and a lot of this stuff, it looks like, is stuff that needs to be, that's what a lot of it is, city plan. Police position. Yeah, you can't, appropriation ordinance just can't be referenced, so you go into.
Good question.
Mayor's Court update? Officer report?
We'll have to get that.
Fire Department update?
The mayor's court?
Yeah.
Did you have a mayor's court report last month out, remember?
We did.
We did, but.
We did have one, okay.
She didn't get one out back.
Is Mike here, did you want to go first, sir?
Yeah, it's fine. Look it up here, I don't know if anybody can hear me.
No, you don't need a mic for that.
Oh.
You're right there, speaker's right behind you.
All right, treasurer's report for July twenty. All right, just total months, total funds of month managed is two million five hundred eight thousand one hundred forty-five dollars and fifty-six cents. Of that, it's best returns would be, let's see, one million seven hundred nine thousand eight hundred thirty-one dollars and ninety-six cents. And I believe, last month, I talked about the CDs, I just wanted to come in and make sure, we did switch over to People's Bank. We do have both our Ds in and out at the moment. And then, so, the goal was, wanted to get them combined together to have one, but they're immature about two weeks apart. So, that'd be the goal for next time, if we're able to get those together, that's kind of what I've been counting, but. Interest rates are pretty low, right now it's point zero four two percent, and I was, I really tried negotiating, called several banks, tried to get the highest rate we could, but just with the pandemic and everything, kind of limited on what their rate goes at this point, so. And yet, large reports.
Let me go next, sir, except his first, sir. All right, good evening, council, I'm gonna try and speak up for our new payment system, this is the auditor's report for July two thousand and twenty, dated today, August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty. The first page, you will see is our cash balance, for folks who complained about the texts, I attached a bigger copy on the next page. You will see, my points here to the left, a steady general fund this summer so far, recreation fund in the negative. A big difference in water and sewer fund, we talked about this throughout the year, about surpluses in the water and sewer fund on a month-to-month basis. I've tried to use most of my terms so far with these reports to bring a lot of new information financially into this room that I felt maybe was not in this room, when, at least when I was on council. And I think this information is very helpful, so we do have large surpluses in many months, but July is a great example, we have two hundred some thousand dollars in payments in the water and sewer funds, that actually brought those funds to a lower balance than they started January first. So, it's all about not just each month in a vacuum, but where we're going for the entire year, just wanted to talk about that. And especially for the veterans, you'll note at the bottom, a new fund, the nine-twenty cares act fund, seventy-three thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars, seven cents from the federal government. Bringing us so far for the year, let's see, at the bottom, you'll see net revenue, four point eight million roughly, net expenses, just under five point one million, meaning we spent two hundred seventy-four thousand six hundred forty-six and sixty-six cents more than we brought in. A little bit of unlucky number there. On page for you guys, one, two, three, four, just a page that I have used since I've begun, and will continue to use, a fund, healthy fund balance, you'll see general, all the street funds combined, parks and recreations sitting at negative, capital, water, sewer, and then next to it, what would be considered to the state, the healthy fund balance, that that would not bring attention from the state on us for those funds. Attention can vary, especially for folks within your wow, you know, attention can vary from a little attention to a little attention you don't want at all. Most of our funds are below healthy balance, and then you'll see some funds, or one fund growing, the other funds so far for the year have shrunk. On the next page, you'll see some explanation about the new credit card statements included in your auditor's report today. Under Ohio House Bill three twelve, passed in December two thousand and eighteen, cities are under strict new requirements to control and report credit card usage and expenditures until, basically today, the city of Nelsonville Auditor's Office has not complied with this. So, monthly, you will begin to see a report that includes statements in full of our credit card expenditures, all of the receipts attached, which I did not get done today, because they're attached to separate invoices for the month, and now we know to just make copies and keep them ahead of time for next month. As well as the full policy updates and the myriad of things Ohio House Bill three twelve requires. So, you'll see on the next page, copies of statements on the next two pages, so there's actually four statements here. In order of the statements, they are the fire department card, sewer plant, administration, which used to be the auditor's office, but really is just administration, and then utility departments. You'll see their purchase costs, total purchases, the credit limit, where those purchases were made. You'll see notes that Judy made as she completed the purchase orders with the department heads. And basically, any information you want, the state does not ask the legislative body to actually approve these expenditures, meaning unless the council instructs the city manager to stop a credit card purchase on something, that's not what this is, it's more of a review process. So, if you see purchases that you don't think are particularly efficient or appropriate, it's up to council to speak up and in a report like this and say, I really think this policy should be updated, such and such, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. So, moving on, there's no questions yet, it's a lot of information already. Okay, important notes about July's number, on the next page, I already said, second round of water and sewer payments, these are twice a year, over two hundred thousand dollars, and will grow once the sewer plant is finished to four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, twice yearly. This is discussion, we've had the meetings passed about, you know, there was a brief discussion at a council meeting, oh, the waterfront had a very large surplus in June. But that's a very large, much larger payment in July, so just keep that in mind, this is a year-long picture we're trying to take. Income tax collections made up ground in July with the filing deadline on the fifteenth, matching pre-pandemic expectations for the year, despite job and hourly cuts across the city and across the county, quite frankly. Gas tax collections is a broken record. And water and sewer revenues, we'll have more information next month, as we finish our first cycle with a much improved and thorough debt collection process, which has been, we've learned a lot, and it's also been difficult at parts, but we have results to show. And the final items at the end, I just wanted to say a thank you to my office and the employees, spearheaded by new employee Cindy Miller, she's been working with HAPCAP, as well as with Robert on the mountain of unpaid water and sewer bills left over from the pandemic, and still growing from the pandemic in a way for some individuals. Together, they have worked hard to connect citizens with HAPCAP's new program, the total cost, or I guess money gained for the city is over twenty thousand dollars, and money that came with no shirings attached, that paid folks' bills to prevent water shut-offs last week. Preventing over a hundred shut-offs, the smallest bill paid was eighty-two dollars, the largest, seven hundred and fifty. And anyone listening at home, I encourage them, if you're struggling with your water and sewer bills, please call HAPCAP and then seven four zero seven six seven four five zero zero, ask for Amanda Swable, I'm sorry, Sobble, and tell them you're asking about the water bill assistance program. And if anybody needs to find this, this report's online at the city website.
Does that mean that we go up to twenty thousand, or is that just?
That's check right to the city, so, well, I guess a myriad of checks for each account, but. Yep, HAPCAP has actually expanded their program from seventy-five percent poverty level to two hundred percent, which would actually include, like, I'm not gonna call any businesses out, but like, people who make forty to fifty thousand in the city probably could qualify, it's pretty extraordinary. Depending on how many kids they have, and HAPCAP is working a lot with these folks to get the paperwork done on time and send us checks to get the shut-off.
I have a question, Taylor, are we actually, have we actually disconnected anybody, or are we still in a warning, like, you know?
We did, so we disconnected last week.
Okay.
So, we started with a list of a hundred and eighty-one people who qualified, and narrowed it down, I wish Jason was here, I think it was twenty-six. Through catching people up, phone calls, multiple letters, HAPCAP helped us with a huge chunk of them. So, yeah, our strategy has basically been, you know, your bill's eight hundred dollars in arrears, we really need you to pay, can you pay two hundred dollars today, start a payment plan? And then, going down the list from there, basically, if you can't, if you don't have money, here, let's connect you with HAPCAP today. If I can take a minute or two and talk about, Cindy actually had a customer at the window two weeks ago, and got shut off notice. The customer's citizen was clearly very concerned, and shaken up, and was handing over, I think it was three hundred dollars, four hundred dollars, and was said this was the last four hundred in their account, and was clearly just distraught about it. She actually handed the money back over the window and was like, okay, we're calling HAPCAP right now, they had actually spoken on the phone. Cindy, this person, this person didn't want to ask for help, didn't think they qualify, had never signed up for anything like this. And so, at the office, in the parking lot, I believe, she worked with HAPCAP to get this person signed up, and their account is current now, so. They've really been a godsend for a lot of people.
Good job.
Great, so I have a question, I mean, it's really good to see, but how did we get so much money in economic development? I thought we only had like three thousand a year ago.
Good question, so I don't have with me what we had a year ago. It looks like we started the year with sixteen thousand, that's what it was on January one, and I.
Oh, I'm glad, I'm just, I'm curious, because it was like three or four last, I think it's sometime.
Where does the Johnson money go?
What is it?
Where does the Johnson money come into?
Into the general funds. So, yeah, I mean, I don't know, I don't remember it being three thousand last year, but I know it's grown, because for many years, that fund was not used for anything whatsoever. It usually brings in two or three thousand a year.
Right.
Could you talk about what the shut-off criteria is for water?
The shut-off criteria, yeah.
So, how long, what does it take to get your water shut off?
Oh, okay, so, water shut off, because water is a human right, is that a question? Okay, so because water is considered a human right, federal law, and we have a federal court order, there's very strict requirements, we only shut off water if the individual would like it, or that does not include the landlord, unless the landlord in attendance agrees. And then non-payment, so non-payment goes past thirty days, past the cycle. I don't remember exactly the shut-off day in the code, I want to say twenty-five, but then, once that happens, there's like two pages of requirements in the code that my office has been doing for twenty years, long before I was here, and it includes exactly how the envelope has to be stamped, exactly what date has to be sent. We followed it up with phone calls this year, and basically, if you still don't pay your bill, you make a visit and shut it off.
So, I think the short answer would be thirty days past due, it starts, the wheels in motion.
Yeah, if you're gonna miss a whole cycle and then go into the next cycle, there's definitely, the system pulls you into its shut-off notice category. That's where we start notifying you that, we're not shutting you off yet, but you will be put on the schedule without payment. If that makes sense.
Would you like to approve the treasurer's report and auditor's report?
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
All right. Fire Department update?
Got fifteen minutes.
I will give you two more. All right, this week, we'll have, part of our ventilation training scheduled on some of the properties on Elm Rock Road, the city has a fire sewer plant. We've had some trainings there in the past, that with COVID and regulations, we've been trying to.
Lower.
We've been trying to comply with all social distancing rules, so we haven't had a lot of training outside of the station. We currently have five members in E F T class right now, they should be scheduled to be completed with their class time in mid-October. We have one firefighter and firefighter one class right now, that'll be scheduled to end in November. And we currently have plans for a civil service test for the fire department scheduled, that'll have to be scheduled by October, by the beginning of October, but it will be, the test itself will actually take place in December. The reason for that is we have provisional appointments on the department that have started at different timeframes, and we have to make sure that we don't pass a six-month period for those individuals. As long as you have a test scheduled within that six-month timeframe, you can actually extend that timeframe, so that's what gets us to December. Those of you might know, our first-out engine, twenty fifty-one, has been out of service for approximately three weeks. We're looking at maybe another week, it had some warranty paint repair, so basically, that engine is being repainted right now in Kent, Ohio, with no cost to the city. So, we should be about a week out, we're hoping on that, to get that back in service. We had our second-out truck engine, twenty fifty-five, had emergency radiator replacement about a week ago, it's back in service now. Ladder fifty-four has repairs that are scheduled, this is about sixty-five hundred dollars worth of repairs, nothing, you know, it's all preventative and some seal leaking and some assistance for the ladder itself. Once the items come in, the appliances and the tools come in for that job, that'll start, it'll probably take the truck out of service, we're thinking about a week. When that happens, I'll contact Logan and the Plains Volunteer Fire Department, so anytime we need a ladder during that process, they'll be automatic in the city, so we will not be without service. On August third, we had a former firefighter pass away, John White, for those that remember John. On August seventeenth, Nelsonville crew members, along with other departments from the area, paid respects to John White and his family. John first started on the fire department. Man, it's been quite a while, when I started as a rookie, I worked alongside John, and he was here for probably twenty-two years on the department as a volunteer, on the volunteer side, and also worked for the city of Nelsonville. COVID-nineteen numbers in the city are still declining right now. Mass fire EMS, we map and track every case in the city, and of course, have strict protocols for fire and EMS response to those locations. So, we are still seeing a decline in those numbers. I still have grants that are open right now, I still have the two thousand nineteen FEMA grant that's open, and that's a communications grant for Markspagers and communication systems for all the apparatus, including headsets and Bluetooth communication outside of the truck. We're hoping that the awards for that grant will be done by September, because round twenty, or, I'm sorry, twenty twenty round for FEMA should start opening up in September, of course, I'll be working on paperwork on that one as well. The B W C grant, we've already got the money submitted in our account, waiting for the green light to make the purchase on those items. We have the Fire Marshal's equipment grant, I'm waiting on that one to see if we just get that. I'm currently looking at some other grants right now, but I have nothing on my desk as far as completed paperwork yet. And that is all I have.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mary.
If I could add something to this report, the chief didn't share, and I think it's just important to remind everyone at home. You know, chief goes through a lot of effort to make sure our I S O rating is very high, what that means for the citizens is lower insurance and so forth, so the proof's in the pudding, right? So, we actually had a fire last Saturday, it was in a bedroom, and because we had an on-duty crew, because it was roughly in the middle of the night, they were able to respond and contain the fire to the bedroom, minimizing damage, so he didn't share that per se in that terms, but I think it's important for everybody at home to know that's what they're paying. but I think it's important for everybody at home to know that's what they're paying for and they're getting the service, that they're getting good back to their buck.
Yeah, that is correct. Actually, that was my mistake. I actually skipped that part on my report. Early Saturday morning, four-thirty morning, we did have a structural fire called out, reported on Jefferson Street. Crews responded. I quickly extinguished that fire. Of course, we did a lot of cleanup and moflet. Everybody escaped the fire without injury. We did have some animals that escaped as well. There was a dog and another pet inside the home that everybody else made it out safe. Minimal damage to the home, room and contents with smoke and heat to the other rooms upstairs. But the main point is everybody made it out and it was a very rapid response to that, to that scene.
Good to know. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask, speaking of the civil service exam, we have one scheduled for the police department here.
So we're just in the final stages of him selecting exactly which test for the officers and then we get it on the schedule ASAP.
Okay. What about for him?
Same.
Okay.
Well, schedule them all, my plan is to schedule them all the same day if we can. I'm not sure of the rules on that per se, but just do it all at one time.
All right. Thank you. You're done, chief, right?
Yes, yes.
All right. Moving on, ordinance sixty-four dash twenty. Need someone to introduce?
I'll introduce it.
An ordinance accepted a gift from Robert and Patricia McCarthy, B B A O N R L L C, of the Star Village Water Tower and the lot is located on and declaring an emergency. Whereas Robert and Patricia McCarthy, B B A O N R L L C, have offered to give the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, the Star Village Water Tower and the lot upon which it is located. Whereas the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, as a political subdivision, is able to provide Robert and Patricia McCarthy, B B A O N R L L C, an I R S eighty-two, eighty-three non-cash charitable contribution form. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that the city of Nelsonville, Ohio hereby accepts the gift from Robert and Patricia McCarthy, B B A O N R L L C, of the Star Village Water Tower and lot it is located on. The city of Nelsonville, Ohio expresses its gratitude to Robert and Patricia McCarthy for said gift. The city of Nelsonville, Ohio hereby authorizes the city manager to execute an I R S Form eight-two, eight-three non-cash charitable contribution form for Robert and Patricia McCarthy, B B A O N R L L C, for the Athens County Auditor's true value for the water tower and lot it is located on in the amount of sixty-eight thousand four hundred and forty dollars. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Higher Revised Code, Section seven thirty-one point thirty, because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary so that the gift may be completed as soon as possible and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. duly enacted by council on first reading and on suspension on the twenty-fourth day of August two thousand twenty.
Any questions? Council discussion?
I have a question. So do we have like direct access to the land so there won't be any issues with-
We do, we do. Yes. There was a court case out there a few years ago between the owners of Star Village and another Jason property owner that resulted in a permanent injunction with the other Jason property owner could not block access to that tower. And that's in the, what we'll be receiving. So we do have direct access. And I walked out with city manager and looked at the site. So yes, we do. That's been, that's been a bugaboo all along for many years, something.
Thank you.
Motion to suspend. Second.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion to approve. Who stood up?
Second.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance sixty-five dash twenty. Someone to introduce?
I'll introduce it. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute change orders number two and number four for phase one of the Nelsonville Regional Sewer Collection System and declaring an emergency. Whereas delay claims costs have been made by the contractor and approved by the project engineer in the amount of thirty-six thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars, change order number two. Whereas there was an emergency installation of a four-inch H D P E horse bank approved by the project engineer in the amount of twelve thousand four hundred fifty-five dollars, change order number four. Whereas there are sufficient contingency funds in the city, I'm sorry, in the Nelsonville City contract of the Phase One Regional Collection System to fund these change orders with the current financing. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that the city manager is authorized to execute change order number two for phase one of the Nelsonville Regional Sewer Collection System for thirty-six thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars and change order number four for phase one of the Nelsonville Regional Sewer Collection System for twelve thousand four hundred fifty-five dollars in accordance with Exhibit A attached hereto and incorporated herein by record. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Higher Revised Code, seven thirty-one point thirty, because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary so that the change orders can be implemented as soon as possible during the construction project and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. duly enacted by council on first reading and suspension of the rules the twenty-fourth day of August two thousand twenty.
Council discussion? Yes, I think you corrected them. Clerk aware did not allow.
Yes, I did.
Thank you.
Scott, can you tell us what delay claims cost is and why it costs thirty-six thousand dollars?
Absolutely. Mike, do you want to expand on it? The contractors' daily appointment costs are possibly seventy-six hundred dollars, whatever it's documented, according to the table. They submitted a claim for seven and four days of delay due to the amount of sewage in the trunk sewer. And the city's inability to get that pumped out into the plant wasn't happened. They had experienced problems with the pumps that pumped the sewage out of the trunk sewer into the treatment plant. And because of those problems, it was backed up and the contractor could not work because they actually had to put the new sewer through the old sewer. We reviewed the information, knocked it back by half a day, to six point seven five days. There was a couple in there that extended, overextended themselves a little bit. But based on our review and our own site representatives' review, we felt that was fair, justified. So it's actually lost time and pump center for the-
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Have we corrected that problem?
So, yeah, if I can expand on that a little bit. So it's my understanding, a year or two ago, the request was made for a new pump in the basement of the sewer plant. And the pump wasn't replaced because it cost ten thousand dollars and the decision was made to try and live along until we could get through it. Well, that pump is the one that's given us all the fits. One day it'll pump six hundred G P M gallons per minute and the next day we'll be lucky if we get fifty out of it. So, and there was three down there and two of them were completely dead and we were on the last leg. So we were not able to get it out. To answer your question, the contractors are far enough upstream that they're able to pump around and therefore we aren't the issue anymore for slowing them down. Except for today. Today, a water line broke. It's old material that I actually talked about a little bit in my update coming. When the ground slipped, it took the water line with it. So we had to go out and repair that water line today. But there was quite a bit of time of them pumping water out of the twenty-foot deep hole.
Okay. Any other questions? Motion to suspend. Second.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
All right. Ordinance sixty-six dash twenty.
I'll introduce it.
An ordinance creating a part-time position of police department clerk and secretary and declaring an emergency. Whereas the police department is in need of a part-time clerk secretary. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that the city hereby creates the part-time position of police department clerk secretary for thirty-two hours per week at an hourly rate of twelve dollars an hour and no benefits except over. The police chief shall be the immediate supervisor of this position. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Higher Revised Code, seven thirty-one point thirty, because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary so that the position will be filled as soon as possible and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. duly enacted by council on first reading and suspension of the rules the twenty-fourth day of August two thousand twenty.
Okay. Council discussion?
Yes. I want to find this one. So I actually, Taylor, you might be able to help me out with this. I think we're just spending so much money with so many good things coming up that we need to start putting some things to next year's budget. So is this going to work out as far as what we have adding a position at this point in time?
Can I just run it first? Yeah. So this isn't adding a new position. This is actually a question out here Facebook land as well.
Oh, yeah, it says create.
So chief has three part-time positions on the rosters in the budget for sixteen dollars and some change. We are using one of those positions and the salary that was already appropriated for that and only paying twelve dollars an hour. So there's roughly four dollars an hour savings per hour there. So instead of three part-time police officers, you only have two part-time police officers and then one part-time clerk.
But are we ever going to fill that other one? Or is that just dropping off the books?
For now, it's just a zero sum. So my knowledge-
This is replacing that part-time officer position. So that will-
That's what I mean. I'm not going to like add the position again later because it says creates is what was kind of being created.
Well, you have to create. It's a brand-new position.
True. But I guess I'm saying-
My question is, does the position need to abolish, the part-time officer position?
So chief had said in police department that he would, he felt confident that all shifts can be covered with getting rid of that one part-time and turning it into a clerk.
Yeah, we did question.
So we're not replacing the other one?
We're not replacing. We're not here for part-time officer. He said it could cover all shifts. That's what he had.
So our net spend's gone down four dollars an hour then?
Correct. There's a facet that you have to authorize. You have the staffing ordinance has to authorize the position, but you also have to fund it. In this case, it won't be funded because they're using the money for the secretarial clerk position.
Both of you question, listen to me.
Definitely.
And the reason why, because we questioned on this, that this clerk will spend the time doing the reports, the officers will spend more time on patrol and because we're doing more arrests and more stuff. So there's ten times the paperwork. So rather than these guys spending an hour, two hours sitting in there doing paperwork, they can be back out on the street patrolling. Am I correct in that?
You're a hundred percent correct. It's been in the, it's one of the, one of the things been a discussion since I took over here. I don't know about before, maybe it was. Just to get the officers on the street more. So this person will be sitting at the window that we already have existing. So there will be a face to greet customers when they come in that way. Once everything gets settled, I'm going to realign the phone tree and have one number for City Hall. And, you know, option one would be non-emergency police, option two would be non-emergency fire and so forth. And, but when, when that person is at the desk, able to take that call, it won't be a call tree. It'll be that person answering the phone and they can forward it to the water office, my office, wherever the person wants to, you know, whoever they want to talk to. So we're just trying to increase the level of service that we're providing to the community with more police on the street and somebody to answer the phone after the record situation gets under control and P D.
Actually, to answer your question, it has been an issue that we don't have enough time to do the paperwork in this. It has been an issue for a while. We just did not get, I guess, the funds to do it.
Well, the funds are already appropriated, right?
Correct.
I think it would be called scheduling.
Engineering, I think our past chief did not want to give up the part-time position.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion to suspend. Second.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Ms. Dumpy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Yes.
That is evil. Some for the voters. Whatever it takes.
And he was all over that.
That's it.
All right. Wow, Susan, you're getting broke right back here, aren't you?
Yeah.
Okay, ordinance. I think Mr. Hunter will look a little bit-
I did this one for you.
Yeah.
She's having flashbacks now.
Ordinance sixty-seven dash twenty.
Sixty.
Sixty-seven twenty. Need someone to introduce?
I'll introduce it. An ordinance adopted in Nelsonville City Code Section nine point one eight point zero one and nine point one eight point nine nine vacant property fees and penalties. Whereas the Nelsonville Planning Commission recommended on August nineteenth, twenty twenty, the adoption of Nelsonville City Code Section nine point one eight point zero one and nine point one eight point nine nine vacant property fees and penalties. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that Section one, the Nelsonville City Code, shall be amended effective January first, two thousand twenty-one to adopt the following. Nine point one eight point zero one vacant property fee. The fees described in this section are established in order to defray the costs to the city government and community as a whole related to the health, safety, and economic impacts of structures which remain vacant for long periods of time, including, but not limited to administrative costs for registering and processing the vacant building owner registration form and for the costs incurred by the city in monitoring the vacant building site. The fees are also constructed, I'm sorry, also structured in order to provide appropriate incentive for owners of vacant buildings to care for them properly, seek to fill them, and in appropriate cases demolish them. The annually increased fee amounts are intended to absorb the costs incurred by the city for demolition and hazard abatement of or repairs to vacant buildings as well as the continued normal administrative costs stated above. A. The owner of a vacant building shall pay a fee of two hundred and fifty dollars for the first year the building remains vacant. For every consecutive year that the building remains vacant, an annual fee will be assessed at double the previous year's fee amount for a maximum annual fee equalling the five-year fee of four thousand dollars to be used for the fifth and for all consecutive subsequent years of vacancy. B. The first annual fee shall be paid at the time the building is registered. If the owner successfully restores the building to occupy or demolishes it in accordance with applicable city code during the first year following registration and is renewed in timely fashion and there have been no violations associated with the property, the fee shall be refunded less than administrative charge equal to the cost the city has incurred. Absent a showing of good cause, if the building is not registered within the timeframe required in Section B or the registration is not renewed within thirty days after the expiration of one year from the date of the previous registration, a penalty shall be paid in addition to the annual registration fee. The penalty shall be equal to one-half of the current annual fee or one thousand dollars, whichever is less. Section two, the ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law, duly enacted by the city council on the second reading, the twelfth day of September, two thousand twenty.
Mr. President, I do have a comment I'd like to make on this. Go ahead. As most of you know, any fees we charge have to be related to our actual costs that we have involved. And I would have to tell you, the fee seems somewhat excessive. And I would have to tell you, the fee seems somewhat excessive to me. I've asked, um, Becky to put some numbers together for me before second reading. Okay. On this because obviously if you go five years, you're not looking at four thousand dollars we've collected. It's almost eight thousand dollars we've collected. And I just don't, off the top of my head, see how we would have that kind of makes sense. Okay, so you've asked her to put numbers for me?
I, I also have a couple of comments. Um, this, that what we're seeing tonight is missing. Um, C and D, which were before. Um, on the prior version and what the planning commission discussed, which was C is the fee shall be paid. In full prior to the issuance of any zoning or demolition permits. Unless the property is granted an exemption and B was all the way, but fee shall be paid by the prior, by the owner prior to any transfer of an ownership interest. In the vacant building, a lien may be placed on the property to collect anything with fees. And I know I was at the planning commission meeting, so was, uh, Justin and Dan, that they definitely were in support of those two.
I can only talk to what I was given from Becky.
Yeah.
That pays, so we can check that out.
Yes, it is missing those.
It is missing those. And then also, um, I, I'd like to make a motion to amend. A, um, removing the word for the first year and removing the building remains vacant. I think that, um. Makes it seem like. It has to be vacant for a whole year.
As you register.
As you re, yeah, so it says the owner.
Why don't you give me those since we're gonna have to add, we have amended to add C and D anywhere earlier, they're missing. Um, if you give me those, I'll put them in and then council.
So I don't know, should we make them, should we? I don't know, do we table this? I mean, that we need.
You don't need to know what it's.
Okay, so I'll give you, I'll give you those, um.
I would suggest just because to Gary's point, you know, they have to be reconcilable, so I would go back to Becky's original fees of. Hundred dollars for the first year, two hundred second year and so forth, and then I think it was no more than sixteen hundred dollars.
Right, I, I know, and I think, um, that the planning commission and their recommendation of the fee structure anyway. That they very much felt like a hundred dollars wasn't. Encouraging enough, they felt like, so there, this was their word. That two hundred and fifty dollars is enough to make somebody fiscally aware that this is happening, whereas a hundred dollars, a lot of people. You know, a hundred dollars isn't gonna make them.
I was there too, and that was.
But two hundred and fifty dollars, they felt like somebody was gonna say, okay.
It's not the two hundred and fifty dollars that bothers me, it's the doubling at the four thousand.
I, I hear what you're saying, Gary, and I agree, and we did talk about that, that fees need. And, and I think some of those questions were asked, like, what are. You know, so boarding up windows, what, 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 what necessarily would the city be incurring cost-wise that these fees would be going to?
Yeah.
Um, so I think those are good questions for Becky to come back, but I do, yeah, I think we did wanna make sure that C and D. And that some of that word is cleared up.
And I, I think what the intent is of the planning commission and Becky as well is just to encourage folks who have property that are there elect to, uh, do something about it. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if you think about the fees though, you know, you have all Becky's time and efforts that she's dealing with, it's a longer property remains vacant. Then, you know, you also have police and fire. Patrolling. Patrolling, potential issues with, um, um, you know, people.
Squatters.
And squatters, yes. And with loan boarding up, I mean, minimum with labor and as wise, you're looking at five hundred dollars if you're paying city employees.
Here's my take on it. If you're wanting people to actually comply and come to you, not hide and say, hey, I have a vacant property, here's my money. You know, a hundred dollars they might do. Are they gonna come and do that for two hundred and fifty dollars though?
Well, we know which properties are vacant.
But I'm just saying, are we gonna get compliance with that much money? I mean, it's just something to think about.
It is.
It's two fifty's a lot for Nelsonville, maybe not Columbus, but it's a lot for Nelsonville.
And I think that's where it's, it's to incentivize something with the property, something to be done with the property.
True, if they have the money, like I know she said some banks have it, which, yeah, they could afford two hundred and fifty dollars. But for actual people that maybe.
Well, they could sell it.
Have the money.
Selling it would be an option.
Sure, I'm just saying it's something to think about. I think a hundred is good to start off. You can always raise it. It's harder to lower it. You can always raise it later if it doesn't work out. Just a thought.
Go ahead.
I got comments from, from the crowd.
Go ahead.
So, uh, Victor McDonald, Sally Dishon and Candace Flowers are opposed to this ordinance. And then, uh, Ms. Joyce Bishop said this should be for the residents' property, not the buildings uptown.
It's for both.
I believe it's for both.
It's for residential and commercial, it's all property. Um. Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, we have some, we have some stuff to, you know, Becky's gonna bring for us some numbers. Give those to Gary and then we have two more things and then we have it up for second reading.
Okay.
Okay. We'll try to send out a device. Okay. Thanks, Gary. Thank you, Gary. All right, ordinance sixty-eight dash twenty? You put the introductions.
I'll introduce it. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to prepare and submit an application. To participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement in our local transportation improvement program. And to execute contracts as required. Whereas the state capital improvements program and the local transportation improvement program. Both provide financial assistance to political subdivisions for capital improvements to public infrastructure. And whereas the city of Nelsonville is planning to make capital improvements by completing the wastewater treatment plant project. And whereas the infrastructure improvements herein above described is considered to be a priority need for the community. And it's qualified, is a qualified project under the OPWC programs. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio. That the city manager on behalf of the city of Nelsonville is hereby authorized. To apply to the OPWC for grant funds to cover the USDA and OWDA loan interest during construction. The city manager is authorized to enter into any agreements. As may be necessary and appropriate for obtaining this financial assistance. The servant shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law. Willing enacted by council on second reading on the twelfth day of September, two thousand twenty.
I think Michael can speak to this.
Oh, yes, I can. And it's, uh, as I said, it's the interest, um, that the city won't hurt during construction, so construction is gonna take at least eighteen months to get the plant up and running. And the interim financing that, uh, the funding agencies have used, this is actually a great effect there. Well, the upside may be the question, it's roughly three hundred and sixty dollars.
And I think Curtis said it's not available till November or something like that.
Uh, the application is due November third.
Are there any strings attached to the money or? They like us at the moment.
Let's keep it that way.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
All right. Okay. All right, thank you. Ordinance that we added, the agenda sixty-nine twenty? Uh, a resolution, I believe.
Resolution on the brick.
Yeah, here's a resolution right here.
There is a resolution.
All right, we have a resolution in between, right?
Let's do the resolution.
You wanna be the resolution?
Let's do the resolution.
I don't have the number, so.
There's either.
There's no number on it.
Cuz she's the number on it.
There is no number.
It's a resolution. We'll look it up.
Okay.
A resolution memorializing Chestnut Street historic brick. That could not be saved for street use because of poor soil conditions. Whereas the historic Nelsonville Street Brick, Nelsonville Street Bricks installed on Chestnut Street. From the intersection of Canal and Chestnut Street to Chestnut and Borough Boulevard intersection. Were to be replaced as a result of the sewer construction. Whereas poor soil conditions have made it impossible to replace these bricks on Chestnut Street. Whereas the city of Nelsonville, Ohio wishes to memorialize this historic brick street by constructing a brick sidewalk from these bricks. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio. That it is the intent of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio to reinstall the historic bricks removed from Chestnut Street. From Canal Street intersection to Borough Boulevard intersection in a sidewalk at the same location. This resolution shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Willing enacted by council this twenty-fourth day of August, two thousand twenty.
This is the one reading right. Any council discussion?
Uh, so I just have a quick, and maybe we don't have the answer to this yet. Um, will that street then? It won't be re-bricked, it'll be, will it be paved? Or will it get new, different brick?
So I can answer that. So the, it was, the original intent was a nine-foot wide section was gonna be cut through the bricks. And the bricks would be replaced. That was all wider, the trench was supposed to be. As they moved down the street, the soil conditions deteriorated to the point now where we have cave-ins and we've actually swallowed curbs. On one side of the street and pulled sidewalks and ends of driveways off and even separated, uh, steps from one residence's front porch. Now, all that damage will be repaired by the contractor before they leave town. I won't give them their last payment until that's taken care of. But on the flip side, the bricks, so, uh, typically with these loans, there's no variation allowed. You have to put the bricks back. And to put the bricks back in a nine-foot wide section was not a problem. But now that we've consumed a whole street, the amount of bricks that have been destroyed. It is not feasible or even really a possibility to get bricks in that quantity that will match. Nor find a contractor that can put them back to standard where it'll be able to be maintained. So. The EPA had, uh, the Ohio historic folks come down, evaluate the site. And within seconds on site, they immediately determined that it was not feasible to put the brick back due to the cave-in. As you, if you've seen it, it's a massive crater from curb to, well, front porch to curb and in some places twenty feet deep. So we've, uh, with our commitment, so there we brainstormed options to do something with the brick. Other than just throw them away and forget about it. And we bounced ideas around and one of the ideas that they came up with was to possibly install a new sidewalk. Because one side of the street from the back of Domino's down to the old gas station, there's no sidewalk there. And, uh, one option is within the next five to ten years, the city would be able to go, or if we, the city would commit to getting, using those bricks. Memorializing those bricks, maybe even a placard that explained. These bricks were manufactured here, they were installed on this date. And any other tidbits that we can come along and then put a little plaque down there. Using those bricks where the street was. So it will be asphalt, they're gonna put eight inches of asphalt. On top, on top of the compacted structure and of course replace any of the curbs and sidewalk on the other side of the street that's been destroyed.
You're saying we're not putting the bricks in for five to ten years, or did I misunderstand?
So they're giving us five to ten years to do the sidewalk. So as long as we agree that we will, uh, do the bricks in say five years. Then within five years, that's how long we have to do the sidewalk. If that five years comes about and we just don't have the money to do it, they will give us an extension. It's just that they wanted a plan, which this ordinance serves as a plan, that we are going to do something with those bricks, other than throw them away. Currently, they're being stacked, or they're not being stacked, they're being dumped out back. We have a special spot for them. And as community service folks come on board needing work to do, we're going to have them clean and palletize them. That way we can maneuver them around and storm for safekeeping and then get rid of the busted bricks.
All right. Motion to suspend? Second. You don't need a motion. Motion to adopt?
Yeah, okay. Okay, so the motion. Motion to adopt?
Second.
Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
It's Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
All right, now to ordinance sixty-nine dash twenty?
Hold on. Excuse me, hold on one second. We have good video on this side, but people at home are texting me that they don't have video. Second. Oh, it's back up.
Well, when we, we always ask.
We always ask, cuz they, they ask questions.
Okay, yeah.
We're, yeah, so. Oh, we're back on. Proceeds.
All right, need someone to introduce.
An ordinance pursuant to Nelsonville City Code section nine point one five point one zero point zero seven. Declaring two trailers sitting on one twenty-fourth tow drive, Nelsonville, Ohio, as a public nuisance. Because they are dilapidated, dangerous, unsafe, unsanitary and unfit for human habitation. Ordering the structures raised and declaring an emergency. Whereas Nelsonville City Code section nine point one five point zero one point zero seven. Provides that when city council determines the structure is dilapidated, dangerous, unsafe, unsanitary or otherwise unfit for human habitation. And it is unreasonable to repair the structure, it may, it may declare the structure a public nuisance and have it raised and removed. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio. That the city of Nelsonville pursuant to Nelsonville City Code section nine point one five point zero one point zero seven. Declares two trailers sitting on one twenty-fourth tow drive, Nelsonville, Ohio, a public nuisance. Because it is dilapidated, dangerous, unsafe, unsanitary and unfit for human habitation. And they are unreasonable to repair and hereby orders the structures raised and removed. This ordinance shall be effective at the earliest convenience by law, willing acted by council on first reading. Under suspension of the rules the twenty-fourth day of August, two thousand twenty.
Council discussion?
Are the owners aware of what's happening?
Yes, I believe it.
So that's one of them is the trailer that burnt down. Uh, and the other one's just such a disarray.
It actually had to be torn because of, it was catching fire too.
But I mean, the owner knows, they're not gonna come up and see their house just torn down.
No, no, no.
Actually, they're deceased.
The owner, yeah.
Yes.
Well, that answers my.
So the next kid would be notified.
And I think Becky said they couldn't be cured properly either, so.
No.
Their hands are ripped completely wide open and also it's a great eyesore.
From the bike path, it's sore.
Also, who bears the cost for this?
So we are going to bear the cost for this. Uh, currently, we have someone lined up who will tear it down for. Um, a very affordable cost and then the cost of a dumpster. So it. Two grand roughly for both of them, uh, not each, so a thousand bucks apiece. And, uh, the other thing is the, uh, landowner with the trailer to sit on, they're in full cooperation and being very helpful. They wanna go on just as bad as everybody else.
So the assessments on one of the taxes, whether it be the trailer owners or the property.
Oh, great, thank you.
Letting go of that.
Yes, definitely.
Motion to suspend?
Second.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Dow?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yeah, I should do it now. Nice. Tell me what you're trying to do.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Dow?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
All right. We are to the city manager's report. Scott, take it away.
Great. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, the first thing I wanted to open up with was a question was asked out in Facebook land. About the paint for PD and FD, who paid for that? If I recall correctly, that was mostly donations, but, uh, Dan?
So the, the city did pay for, uh, probably about two-thirds of the paint and all of the flooring. Which to date is around fifteen hundred, so and I donated the other third of the paint.
And the labor?
And the labor, yeah.
So Carla helped me with the flooring and my buddy Johnny Mack has been helping paint and.
That's Johnny Flowers for those who doesn't know.
So Johnny Flowers is now AKA Johnny Mack, AKA Jimmy Olson.
Thank you. Uh, so I'll start with the sewer plant first. Um, as previously mentioned, that hole has caved in and it's swallowing sidewalks and, uh, curbs. So again, I just wanted to reassure everyone at home, you know, I know we have a couple of residents that are documenting everything, please continue to document. We are also keeping an eye on it with the help of, uh, Stan Tech. They have, uh, one of their folks on site every day. And I make, uh, site visits three to four times. And I make site visits three to four times a week as well, and so does Jason. So we're all keeping an eye on the damage and if you see something, please let us know. Don't hesitate to call us, we will come out and check it out. I'm happy to announce that we hired Mr. Mike Webb for the position at the wastewater treatment plant and he's going to start with us on Wednesday. The sewer camera and locator, you folks authorized, will be here tomorrow. The train is tomorrow afternoon, so we will have that capability after tomorrow, which is a huge win for us going forward. This is just to plant the seed, but we have, there's going to be a discussion about repairing the water line on Chestnut. So where everything's caved in down there and it's broken the water line, actually it's broken a couple water lines. We're working out the specifics. Right now, there's a four-inch broken multiple times and a six-inch broken multiple times. Now, don't get me wrong, we've repaired it, however, those lines are beyond dilapidated. So we're just getting the requirements together and we'll bring that to council and see what options we have to just replace those two lines and make it one line if that's feasible, or both lines while the entire street's dug up. And that'll meet a couple other requirements as well, but that saves us from having to go back underneath that brand-new asphalt anytime in the near future.
Let's kind of do it.
Yeah.
The, uh, the water folks, so I want to explain this a little bit. At the end of Jefferson Street where the big hill is and the church that was there many years ago, before you get to Washington, there's been water leaking there for years, is my understanding. And our department's been up there to check it multiple times and never once did it come back. So the way they check it is they take the water to the lab and they test it for chlorine and.
Fluoride.
Fluoride, thank you. Fluoride, rather. Never has that water come back actually positive for any of that. So it was always under our understanding that it was groundwater seeping through. By, we were looking at solutions to divert that water. Long story short, we dug into the hill a little bit and took another water sample and had it tested. Sure enough, we discovered that that was city water that's been leaking out all that time and they have stopped it. So the good news is we have a leak that's been spewing lots of water for years that's now been replaced. And the customers up on top of the, have new service, better pressure, the whole nine yards. The pothole repairs continue, the guys were out today putting more asphalt down. Last week, they got caught up on the bike path mowing and a couple other troublesome areas. We talked about the committee meeting for trash pickup starting at zero five on September first. So that would be an hour earlier than currently. So currently, the trash trucks only allowed to come in at zero six. This will allow them to come in at zero five, which helps them to navigate the construction and mainly the construction is what they're trying to navigate and get around before they get everything up and blocked.
So that's five AM.
That's five AM for non-military people. And six-thirty.
Zero thirty, yeah.
Yes. What they said. Switching to the police department, thank you, Mr. Booth, for getting us the seatbelt extenders for the cruisers. The new cruiser we got the other day will be getting stripped on Wednesday. Dispatch is set up to transfer to Hawken College on September first, pending any delays, that's the go date. I would like to ask council, or I would like to propose to council to hire Mr. Chris Jones full-time pending his, of course, his paperwork to get onto the pension, because that's got to happen first. And then the second piece of that, or it'd be conditionally, you know, for the testing that we're going to do as well.
Right.
So I would like to move him full-time with yours.
So a motion to accept the manager's recommendation upon the completion of paperwork and. Civil service test, to hire on Chris Jones is full-time.
I'll second that.
So just to clarify, we're, we're allowed to hire him as soon as he completes his paperwork, but he still has to do the civil service.
Right, right.
Gotcha.
So who's Chris Jones?
He's part-time now.
He's part-time now.
He's part-time.
He has a full-time position.
He's been doing a fantastic job for us, he's come up here and found significant amounts of drugs. In fact, a, a good friend of mine who used to complain regularly about the PD actually called me the other day to tell me that they got pulled over for a curvy license plate and they were excited for it. And, you know, traffic stops lead to drugs, so.
Is Mr. Jones here? I think I see a cruiser pulling in.
I don't believe he's, if.
He works Monday.
Possibly.
If, if he's, if he's on part-time now, has he not already done the civil service test?
So he's got to do it for us, so all of our police officers. We haven't had a civil service test for police officers since last year sometimes, my understanding. So we have a lot of officers that are required to do it, we've actually had one quit since then before they even got to it. The other paperwork piece is by part-time, they're Opers and they have to complete their police and fire paperwork prior to us hiring them or the city can incur fines down the road.
Okay.
So that was pending all his paperwork.
Okay, so your motion is.
To hire Chris Jones or take the city manager's recommendation per him completing his paperwork and passing the civil service exam.
And this was to fill an empty spot?
Yes.
Yeah. I'll take the back.
I, if you'd like to meet him, he'll be here in five minutes. I just thought you, you want to meet him. I just, I asked him, I think it'd be a good idea for you to know who it is. And he, he said that he's finishing it up, don't worry, he'll be back in five minutes.
So we'll have to hurry.
So.
Yeah, I tell him no.
All right, so I'll second that motion.
Mr. Jones, I did?
Oh, whatever.
Thanks for playing anyway.
Time out, Mr. Taylor.
Ready for a roll call?
Go ahead.
I'll call you first. Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes, Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Dow?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
All right, anything else?
Oh, I have plenty more, sir. We're halfway there. I would also ask council to provisionally appoint, thanks chief, Ms. Tracy Barner, she's a Nelson, as part-time police officer. She's a Nelsonville resident and has been years of experience. She's interviewing with the chief and he would like to provisionally hire her as well, part-time.
This is police.
Police, so that's filling a part-time position, so.
So Jones is moving up and.
That creates a, that fills a full-time position that's empty, so therefore he hasn't, okay. I'm just making sure that.
So what they're going to do is Jones, when he moves up, will be our ninth. And then when, we'll create a vacancy, so they won't have Hanson, then the clerk, and then now that vacancy will be filled by Tracy.
So we're still not adding any people, we're just filling positions that are already available.
Motion to accept the city manager's recommendation to hire as a part-time officer, Tracy Barner. Pending her paperwork and civil service, correct?
I'll second that.
And pending Chris's appointment. Yes.
Well, that dog goes in.
Grant?
Yes, Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Dow?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, not much more, almost there. So the last thing is I just want to share with everybody what we spent our first round of CARES money on. So we had the seventy-three K, we've already executed it and we're going to go out and ask for more in addition to the government pushing some down. So we plan on going to the county for phase two and seeing if they have any available. If not, then we will hope, and it sounds like it's coming, for more money coming down the pipeline. So what we spent that on is, we spent that on new furniture for the police department. We justified that because they have nine full-time folks and they were currently working out of two offices, everybody was sharing the same seat, same computer and so forth. So to meet social distancing requirements, we complied with, I believe it was Arkansas, but definitely California and their requirements by having cubicles with wall height set at six feet. And now every officer will have a small cubicle. The chief moved out of the chief's office, all the officers were moving there and the chief took one of the smaller rooms. The second piece of that is we got them computers, so their laptop computers. And now, again, they're not touching the same computers. And then should the need ever come to have to work offsite, then that option is now available. The conference system that's incomplete that we see tonight is not done, but it will be done soon. That's one thing we purchased. Another thing we purchased was conference phones, so we will have the ability to do conference calls. We have, we've got two of them, which we use for training, meetings and so forth. And it's not locked down to just this room, we can use it in the other conference room or in an office. And then the last thing we got was the Chromebooks for council. So you'll be able to work remotely in the event that we cannot all stay here.
Sounds good.
Last thing, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to add, I don't know if Mr. Hunter saw, he's usually the one first on this stuff, but just this afternoon at three-thirty, the Ohio Controlling Board released a hundred seventy-five million, about half of the first CARES act dispersment. I don't know what that means for us in the end, if that means half the money or not, but.
It's my understanding that there, the governor's talking about releasing all eight hundred and fifty million, I would hear, in pieces in the next month.
And then what we have on scope for that is more IT improvements within the city and a couple other things like improving the bathroom, so it's all touchless. You know, the, and then touchless light switches, so the lights will be motion activated. Different equipment for FD and possibly even some equipment for FD, or PD.
There's also some conversation, I know Ohio's pushing it in Congress for Congress, if they don't appropriate more funds to, one, extend the timeframe for spending the money that we have, the one point two billion Ohio has, and allowing it to be spent for employee costs. Heaven knows where the government, where the governor will get their act together and do that, but that's, that's on the table.
Make their recess to the second, so we'll see.
And the last thing I have, and it's just, so happens he's standing here. Our employee of the month for last month was Mr. Drake Chilco, that guy.
Speech.
What did Drake do down there? Took everybody's temperature when they walked in today?
Yeah, exactly.
And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. All right, number fourteen, we are up to discussing council. Here's your new police officer, Dan. Hey, right there, come on in, Mr. Jones. Miss, 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 everybody, this is our, this is our, I don't know if you know Jeff, we just. The motion to make you full-time?
Yes, we did.
Come on out. Why don't you come in here a little bit?
I love him calling out.
So.
And now we didn't zoom in, he's that big.
Yeah, he is that big, so that's Mr. Jones. So.
Nice to meet you all.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Been hearing some great things about you, so appreciate it.
I've been funnied so far. I cut up more of my paperwork, so I'm not going to play again.
Okay.
I appreciate it, though, thank you guys for having me.
We appreciate it.
I've been a blast so far, so.
What's that?
Uh-oh.
You got a comment? Oh, God, okay, so we appreciate everything that you're doing, thank you. Keep up the good work.
Appreciate it.
All right, I did this one thing from the, uh, let's see, the Green Team Volunteer Cleanup Committee is looking for more volunteers. This is from Nan, she needs some volunteers, we're trimming some trees, they're out of code and everything else, so just put that out there.
Who do people contact if they want to?
Uh, Ms. Nan Schaefer, or you can contact her and I can link you up.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. All right. All right, discuss council vice presidency.
Yeah, Mr. President, I appreciate you putting that on there because I forgot to bring it up at the last meeting, so I appreciate you having it on there. We don't currently have a vice president and I think it's important that we have someone that's been through the training for mayor's court. So I would actually recommend Dan Sherman be vice president.
Okay, I'll second that.
Can somebody just clarify, like, the term timeframe for this? Is this like?
Unless council removes it sooner, it goes until the next election.
Okay.
Next election.
And then there is training at, I believe.
When is it?
I misbelieve, but it was last Friday.
No, no, that's, that's not, that's not new train, that's refresh.
Refresh.
So it is in January, so in January, if there's someone, you know, where we can discuss it again or if someone is very interested in taking it, then, you know.
It's two days, right?
Two days, it's two days, it is all day, and it's in Columbus.
Welcome. Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Dow?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Vice president.
Okay, and now, I believe we are to the good of the order. Mr. Booth, I'll start with you tonight.
Uh, I'm just going to kind of echo what I said last week. I see our census numbers are still low comparatively to the state and that those numbers are vital to our city. As far as federal funds, good things you could get for our, our community. So if we drop below the city threshold, then a lot of things will change for the worse and a lot of the good momentum's going to go away. So please get online and fill out your census.
Can I have a?
Go right ahead.
That next door, I was, I heard banging at the abandoned house next to me and there are census workers looking for folks who have not done their census yet. Though it was a lady I saw, I did not recognize her, so I wanted residents to know it's not a scam, it's not a trick. There are people coming to your door. I want you to do your census, please.
Yes, they should have identification, I think.
They do.
They do.
So.
Down in Mexico.
That was actually, I have, I had two things for good of the order. One is the census, I actually saw the woman today and they do wear, like, I think it says census on it and a name tag, I think. And I guess I would encourage people too, that if they come to your door and even if you've already filled it out or you did it, they have addresses that they don't have information on. So even if you think you did it, talk to them so that they can report it because they, they get a list of addresses that haven't been reported yet. So even if you think you did it and somebody's knocking on your door, you know, answer it or if they leave you a, they leave like a little postcard.
Call card.
Yeah, like a call thing, so, so do it if they do that. And the second thing I wanted to say is I did, I wanted to thank Scott and the city for cutting the weeds along the bike path. As a avid bike path user, almost daily, they had really become, they were like encroaching about halfway across the bike path, which as we're trying to social distance out there, was becoming an issue. So that looks a lot better and it just does make the city look nicer because we do get a lot of traffic on the bike path of people both coming to town to ride it and, and people that come from, you know, Athens, turn around and go back. So it's, it's nice when it looks, when it looks good.
Thank you.
Mr. Taylor?
So I'm going to, I'm going to talk about the Buckeyes. This is Trimble Week, so I wore my Buckeye shirt. I want to, really, I, I know this is kind of going to be disappointing this year for a lot of people not being able to attend this game, but this is Trimble Week. And I just wish, you know, all the players a safe and competitive game, of course, with the Buckeyes winning. I want to, it's also going to be senior night, so I want to put out there, you know, congratulations to all the seniors, good luck. You know, my boys are in that class, I'm very proud of them. They've got a great class and I look forward to being there in attendance and, and hope that we have a terrific outcome, so appreciate it. Not to interrupt, same with the volleyball, my best on Saturday, senior night, we've got Trimble, all that good stuff, so.
Nice.
All these kids have worked long and hard for this moment, so.
Mr. Sherman?
The police station's almost done. We're, got like two, two, two rooms, two or three rooms left to do, just waiting on furniture so we can empty out some other rooms. If anybody would like to volunteer, just get ahold of us and glad for the help. And. I saw that. I know, right?
Wow.
Wow.
He's become very vice presidential.
Yes, he has, he's all respected now, so. Oh, no. Okay. I would just like to say that I really believe the city is moving in a very fast-forward, positive direction. I'm very thankful for the people who are in the, the places that they are in now. I just wish, I just wish and hope that the citizens of the community can, you know, get on board and support our people in the supervisory positions that they're in, but. You know, if we're moving forward, let's just keep doing it, thank you.
Me?
Yeah. Ms. Grant?
I have a couple things. I would just like to thank whoever got us a temporary clerk so fast.
Yes.
Johnny Mack. Johnny Mack.